All right, I'll go ahead and call the order or the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Citizens who have requested to address the council will be called on at the appropriate time to make your comments. We did receive just one citizen comment request this evening. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Schwartz. All council are present.
It looks like Councilmember Myers is coming in.
Thank you.
We'll count that.
So all council are present.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Mr. Mike Gans, it will lead us in the Pudge of Allegiance this evening. This is Mike's last meeting, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever to you and justice for all.
Does any council member wish to move any consent agenda item to a business item for individual discussion and vote? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda here.
A second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. All right, we'll jump right into some presentations this evening, starting with our city manager, Mr. Rob Carlinsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the City Council. I am thrilled and excited to announce our new fire chief, Arthur Perillo. Arthur, can you please stand? So Arthur just competed for the job. We conducted a national search for fire chief, and there was a lot of good applicants. And long story short, Arthur Perillo made it to the top. We had multiple interview panels, and we put him through quite the process. But we have selected him as our new fire chief. And yesterday was his first day. And as you can see, we've got some folks from the fire department here in support. It's a big deal. I also want to thank Mike Gans, who has served as our interim fire administrator for the past six, six and a half months roughly. He's done a really good job holding down the fort and helping keep things going, and has provided excellent leadership. So we're going to have Arthur come up, and we'll swear him in with an oath of office and do a penning ceremony. But while he's coming up, I just want to give you a little background on our fire chief. He has about 25 years of experience, all with the Las Vegas Fire Department. And his last position held there was assistant fire chief. And unlike the saying, "What happens in Vegas stays with us," he's actually going to bring his Vegas experience with him. But he has credentials through the Center for Public Safety Excellence in the following areas: chief fire officer, chief EMS officer, and chief training officer. He also has a bachelor's degree in fire and EMS administration and a master's degree in business management and leadership. Chief Perillo describes his leadership style as inclusive, transparent, and focused on developing people and systems that build lasting value for the community. So with that, I will administer the oath of office. All right, if you could bring your right arm to the square and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Arthur Perillo, do solemnly swear.
To faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
To faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Perform my duties as fire chief for the city of Moses Lake to the best of my ability.
To perform my duties as fire chief to the city of Moses Lake to the best of my ability.
To serve the Moses Lake Fire Department with respect and professionalism.
To serve the Moses Lake Fire Department with respect and professionalism.
To serve the citizens of Moses Lake with compassion, courage, and integrity.
To serve the citizens of Moses Lake with compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the State of Washington, and the city of Moses Lake.
To uphold the laws.
And constitutions.
Of the United States of America, the city of Washington, or excuse me, the State of Washington, and the city of Moses Lake.
Congratulations.
All right. Looks like you're getting a standing ovation. All right. So we are now going to have a penning ceremony, and do you want to introduce who's going to do that for you?
It's an honor for me to stand up here in front of all of you, but it's an even bigger honor to have a penning ceremony with a guy who's been my mentor, my supervisor, and ultimately my friend for the past nearly 25 years, retired captain from Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, Don Earl.
All right.
Well, I'd like to thank Rob and everybody who was involved in the interview panels for giving me the opportunity to be here. The trust and the faith that Rob has given me has not rested lightly on my shoulders, and I assure you that I will do everything that I possibly can to serve the citizens and the community of Moses Lake. But I also want to thank Mike Gans for setting the foundation and working really hard over his interim as fire chief to build a good foundation for the men and women who work for the organization. And finally, I'd like to thank the men and women who I'm dedicated to serve of the Moses Lake Fire Department. So thank you very much for being here today. Your support means a lot, and thank you very much. I look forward to working alongside you for the next many years to come. So thank you.
Hey, I'm going to have you guys stand for a photo.
Hey, Mayor, is it, if it's okay, could chief and his firefighters and his staff come on up for a photo in front?
Oh, yeah, 100%.
Okay, so if everybody could come on up?
Try not to turn off the lights or knock anything off the wall on your way up here.
Other.
Best job. Thanks. All right, next up, we have a proclamation. And this is for National Fire Service Week, or Fire Prevention Week for 2025. Whereas the city of Moses Lake is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Moses Lake, Washington, and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics we use in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safety, on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas city of Moses Lake first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety, education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety, Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Moses Lake, do hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th, 25, 25 as Fire Prevention Week throughout Moses Lake, Washington. And I'll go ahead and present this to our new fire chief, Chief Perillo. Okay, next up, I'm pleased to present another proclamation, and this is to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, the city of Moses Lake is pleased to celebrate the Hispanic and Latino community throughout our city. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated in the United States from September 15 to October 15, the observance was introduced in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson, and was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the history, traditions, and culture of the Hispanic and Latinx residents in Moses Lake, we admire the invaluable ways they contribute to our city by bringing rich diversity and growth to our community. And whereas we strive to continue to commemorate this month by recognizing and dedicating ourselves to working together to address the challenges that still face our Hispanic and Latinx population. Now, therefore, I Dustin Schwartz, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Moses Lake, Washington, do hereby proclaim September 15 to October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. In witness thereof, I have caused the seal of the city to be affixed this 23rd day of September 2025. And here to receive the proclamation this evening is representatives of the Latino Civic Alliance, Stephen Garcia, Christian Castrión, and Jocelyn Morales. Would you come up and, would you like to say a few words? Please do. Oh, sorry, just for the record, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, please.
Too much when I'm passionate about something. But on behalf of Latino Civic Alliance, I want to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for recognizing us. We've been around since 2005, started on Buryan Wood over here in 2012. And not a lot of folks know about us, so I'm just kind of give a little spiel of what we do. I help out small businesses, entrepreneurs. And just to let you guys know, I try to steer them away from tacos and more Mexican food in Grand County. So I help out from getting their licenses, setting appointments with the Grand County Health District, and on to leadership and mentorship. And Christian Castrión there, he helps out with a Biffle program, and we help out folks from the ages of 15 on with resume building, coaching on how to do mock interviews and stuff like that. And Jocelyn, our other, my other coworker there, she does a Jaguar program, where she focuses, her and her other staff focus on helping out young troubled youth and their families, especially right now, when we have all this gang violence that's going on. So she's out going out into the community, into the schools, and counseling them, kind of sitting with them, and getting one-on-ones with them, and doing parent coaching with the parents. And that's what we do. And before I go, I just want to say thank you, guys, for all that you do. You have hundreds and hundreds of folks praying over you guys weekly, that God gives you guys the wisdom and the discernment on how to turn Moses Lake into the beacon for the rest of this nation. So I thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Stephen. All right, next up, we have citizen communication. The council values free expression of all points of views and important democratic process. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes. When you are called to speak, please begin by stating your name and city of residence for the record. And again, we do have just one this evening, and that's Mr. Jeremy Davis.
Jeremy Davis, Moses Lake, the vice chair of the Moses Lake Municipal Airport and the president of the Moses Lake Chapter of the Washington Pilots Association. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council and staff. I'm here tonight to share a success story that highlights what makes Moses Lake special, our community spirit. This, we all know, it takes people who care about our city to keep it strong and beautiful. And this past weekend, that spirit was on full display at the Moses Lake Municipal Airport. As many of you know, our airport's taxiways and runways are critical to pilots and passengers who use this facility. Unfortunately, the airport hasn't historically been on regular city maintenance schedule, and over time, cracks have deformed throughout the movement and non-movement areas, some of them two and three inches wide and several inches deep. This creates risk not only for the infrastructure itself, but for the aircraft, pilots, and passengers that use it. Recognizing this, volunteers from the Moses Lake Chapter of the Pilots, Washington Pilots Association stepped up to help out. On Friday evening, a group of us gathered to prepare the cracks for sealing. Then bright and early Saturday morning, about 5:00 AM, Commission Chair Darren Jackson fired up the melting pot, and I showed up shortly thereafter. And our team worked side by side until about 3:00 PM, working with the hot house or hot patch material, mastic. And then with just one pallet of material, based on the limited airport budget, we were able to seal more than 800 feet of cracks. So we got a significant amount done, but that only amounts to about a fifth of the airport as a whole. It may not sound glamorous, but the work will prevent future damage and extend the life of the existing asphalt that we do have, and protect the airport as a valuable asset for the community for years to come. What really stands out to me is not just the result, it was the people. These people were our neighbors, pilots, hanger renters, leaseholders, and supporters that gave their time and energy to make this project happen. On behalf of Chairman Jackson, myself as the vice chair, and the entire Municipal Airport Commission, I wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of the volunteers that showed up. Some of them showed up and worked, some of them showed up and acted as supervisors, which is all the more welcome, because we need a lot of supervision. And then some others just stopped by just to encourage us. So that was awesome to see. So this kind of teamwork helps keep Moses Lake moving forward, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Any questions?
No. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, which I would accept now.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. We have no old business this evening. Our first item of new business is item two, which is 2027 Pioneer Way resurfacing. Mr. Balso.
Good evening, Mayor. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. Back in March, we applied for a grant through WashDOT and the National Highway Asset Management Program, and we were successful. I'm speaking tonight, but Jeff or Levi should be the ones here speaking tonight. They did all the hard work, so hats off to them for all of this. Yeah, oh, Levi is here. Oh, my gosh, he was supposed to be at soccer. Levi, you want to chime in on this? That'd be great. Levi put, like I said, him and Jeff put all the hard work in it, so I'll let him speak.
Okay, so, good evening, council. Once again, we were successful in getting much-needed grant dollars to improve the transportation network here in Moses Lake. We asked for council permission to apply for this grant back in March to repave Pioneer Way from Clover Drive to essentially Broadway Extended or SR171. We received $2.1 million, and this will allow for us to mill up to three inches of the drivelanes and replace it with asphalt, which should prolong the life of this road for many years to come. The last time we did a mill and fill on this was in the 1980s. So it's been a long time coming, and we've been able to preserve it for this amount of time. But unfortunately, nothing lasts forever, so it's time to do it again.
Thank you, Levi. We're going to keep you up here for a second. Mr. Fancher has a question.
I just want to be clear, because you made a comment on the drivelanes. Do you want to explain that just for?
Yeah, so Pioneer Way is currently an arterial. It's configured with five lanes. There's two drivelanes in each direction, and then the turn pocket in the middle. This will be preserving just the drivelanes, so two lanes each direction. And we do have the ability to add on to that if we wanted to include, you know, some of the turn pockets in places. It will also include safety enhancements at the intersections. We'll upgrade the ADA push buttons, because that does cross many schools, medical facilities. Also, we will receive funding for improving the bus stops. Currently, the bus stops, the sidewalks, and the curb are not connected, so we'll have funds to improve that to ADA compliance, allowing, you know, easier access to the bus stops.
Does that mean that the sidewalk moves or the curb moves?
That means that it's connected, the curb and the sidewalk. So we'll be removing grass. We'll remove the grass and then connect.
So the sidewalk will?
Yes, it will, you know, access the curb. And then we will also be extending sidewalk along the school district property between Sharon Avenue and Clover. There's no sidewalk on the east side of the road, so we'll extend that down, remove a little bit more grass, and connect into the intersections. We'll also reach out to the community to see if there's any other input that they have, to make sure that we're fixing it, you know, once the right time. And I'd also like to just recognize Jeff and Brad. Without Civil AI, which you guys approved last year to do a LiDAR scan of the pavement, we wouldn't have had the data necessary to provide in the grant application. So we were able to leverage that information to show that it's a needed improvement, and we competed against multiple other cities. And so, yeah, we're excited to go through the design. I can talk a little bit about the schedule. The design will take place through 2026, and then we anticipate we will go out to bid in the fall or winter of '26 with construction in 2027. So they'll give us plenty of time to, you know, reach out to the adjoining property owners, discuss any other needed improvements or things we should address. And we're excited, so.
Councilmember Martinez.
You answered part of my question. Cold shirt, by the way.
Thanks. It's not original, but.
I'm going to guess if you have your way or any thing to do with the schedule, you won't be doing it during school time, hopefully.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Yeah, we, we will work with the adjoining property owners. Um, the uh, guessing that's a request also.
Yes, it's a request. As somebody that lives in that area, I can't see this happening during when school's in season and session.
Correct. We will, we will try not to disrupt the, the daily operation of business and um, medical visits, school. Um, because we are uh, setting a goal to advertise in the fall and the winter. Um, we can set the timeframe and still get good prices. Um, so we're uh, also, I guess there's one thing I'd like to clarify. We are leveraging our transportation benefit dollars, district dollars uh, as match for this project. So we'll take approximately $550,000 of the transportation benefit district funds um, to use as match for this 2.1 million and allow us to do um, really the best treatment, which is the mill and fill. So.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Thanks, Levi. I think you kind of, I just wanted the public to know. So to address the matching fund. So basically we're matching 500,000 to the 2.1?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted them to be aware of that. Thank you. Good, good deal on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can I ask Levi to clarify something?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Levi, can you speak to uh, any other requirements of the grant? Because like with the, the chip seal, the TIP required reconfiguring, reconfiguring the lanes. Is there anything like that in this grant?
No, there were no requirements to reconfigure the lanes. So we didn't volunteer that uh, treatment. Um, essentially, uh, we're just proposing to remove the existing asphalt. Um, and uh, basically improve the structural integrity with the three inch overlay. Uh, so, uh, oh, sorry, I apologize. There may be stormwater components. So we may have to upgrade some catch basins and some of that infrastructure. Um, and we, in our initial estimates, we think we can do that with the, the 2.6, you know, million that we've budgeted with for design and construction. Um, and we will only be awarded the 2.1 million. So if there is any additional um, needs, uh, potentially uh, replace a water line or something else. So we're not having to dig up a brand new road in five years. We may incorporate those things into the project as well.
I do have a question on that. I, I appreciate Rob's question. I think that was on a few of our minds up here, what strings were attached to the, the funding. Um, it's nice to know that effectively there are none, right? Uh, but.
Just, yeah, safety and.
Sure. Um, but I do want to know is, does our trails plan address that road at all? There's this, I mean, with the, the school and all of that.
There is no identified trail component for that stretch between.
Not for this project, but I mean, aside from in our plan.
Does it address what component of it?
Just that portion of Pioneer Way.
Uh, we have wider sidewalks between Hill Avenue and the downtown. Um, which will, we will not be extending as part of this project to the south. Um, but it will connect in nicely with the new bike lanes on Hill Avenue as part of the chip seal project.
Okay.
So the uh, yeah, there's been no discussion of that. If that's something you want us to look into, we can.
Yeah, I had thought about that because the sidewalks are wider there. So there's an opportunity to lane that out a little bit maybe.
Yeah, we do have a hundred foot of right of way in that area. A majority of it is utilized for uh, buffer and, you know, beautification landscaping. Uh, those trees, I think were planted for my lifetime. So um, yeah, we can look at that.
Okay.
Uh, one, oh, and I guess one other thing I would volunteer, maybe not. Um, with the Columbia Middle School there, I, I recently had some daughters start flag football. And there is no parking near that south end of all of that field. Um, I potentially would, you know, propose at some point during the 2026 design that we explore the ability to add parking along the, the fence line over there. Um, to provide better access for the, there's softball fields, football fields um, and limited access to that part of the, the, the field. So. Okay.
Great. Thank you, Levi.
Thanks.
There's no further discussion. I would accept a motion.
I move to approve the 2027 Pioneer Way resurfacing as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion or questions? If not, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Final item of our new business we have this evening is item number three, which is the purchase of the Bearcat armored vehicle. Uh, which we presented this evening by our Chief Sands.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So um, I authored the agenda bill uh, last week uh, and gave a little snapshot. I guess in addition to what we talked about um, at your uh, study session. Um, case you weren't aware, uh, apparently an online media source took that and put it on. Um, and it got a few hits. So um, I also responded to that to give a little bit more information. And then tonight I'd like to give you uh, a little bit further information and a little bit of history of where we've been and why we are asking what we're asking. So in 1999, the Moses Lake Police Department started a tactical team. Um, generically, they're called SWAT teams or is called the Tactical Response Team. Um, up until that time, we relied on other counties, specifically Shland County and the Tri-Cities Teams uh, to come up when we had a dangerous event. At some point, um, other agencies began uh, joining in. We've had, I think, 10 or 12 different agencies throughout the lifetime of the team uh, that have been on it. Currently, it is the Moses Lake Police Department, the Grant County Sheriff's Office and Adams County Sheriff's Office. Initially, when we started, uh, very little equipment and I uh, I have Captain Williams here who started on the team in 1999. Uh, worked his way through all the way up to commander. Uh, so there's some tactical uh, questions you can certainly ask him, but I think he would nod his head vigorously when I say there was very little equipment. The first armored vehicle we had was a military surplus V-150. I think the 150 stood for the number of times it was going to break down uh, before it's finally unusable. The Grand County Sheriff's Office also received a decommissioned Brink's armored vehicle uh, that was used for about a year before they determined that the armor had been taken out. And so they shoved decommissioned uh, body armor vest in between the panels. Next, the Grand County Sheriff's Office obtained a military surplus Mat V armored vehicle. Excuse me, I take that back. They've got a military surplus MRAP, which is a huge vehicle uh, built from the ground up to withstand IED explosions uh, as well as greater than small arms fire. This had mechanical issues from the beginning and ultimately burned down after a call out in their uh, shop uh, area. Next, the Grand County Sheriff's Office obtained a military surplus Mat V armored vehicle, which again is a huge vehicle is extremely heavy and it is not built for carrying personnel. It is built for stopping bullets and essentially for war. Um, but not in the civilian realm, uh, which brings us to uh, the first Bearcat. In 2020, the Moses Lake Police Department obtained a grant uh, that helped uh, mostly fund uh, 2006 used Lintco Bearcat. This was produced specifically for civilian law enforcement. This vehicle is not as heavy as military and is built to both protect and transport. This vehicle is older and while we uh, will keep it in service, we're hoping to plan for the future. The proposed Bearcat, in addition to being 20 years newer and as a, an officer who's older, I can attest after training with officers that were 20 years newer, uh, it's better. Um, is built on an F-550 civilian chassis with an upgraded 6.7 diesel engine, which I'm told is much easier to maintain uh, than what we currently have. It has four doors, making it easier to deploy officers and a 360 degree camera system for safer operations. While it will be equipped with a system to introduce CS or tear gas, it has no offensive weaponry attached. So how about why? Over the past 18 months, the tactical team has been activated to deal with 37 critical incidents. These range from drug warrant uh, services, barricaded subjects and violent armed offenders. These incidents have been throughout Grant County as well as some in Adams and Kiddatask County, which is a sister county and has a tactical team that will respond with us uh, when we need more manpower and we will with them as well. In addition to those uses, our patrol officers have deployed the Bearcat another 25 times for Moses Lake PD and Grant County calls that were dangerous, but did not meet the criteria for SWAT response. And now we switch to tactics. Back in the day, the tactical team, uh, when the tactical team was called out or even when patrol officers responded to a call that was dangerous, we moved quickly and dealt with the issue. Over times, our tactics have had to change. Frankly, there were times patrol officers probably were going outside of their training and capabilities. And SWAT tactics changed from uh, going in and getting them to a contain and call out approach where we can control the environment much more safely. In 2020, 21, the legislature mandated law enforcement change our tactics and use time, distance and shielding as well as using more resources to deescalate situations. Which is why patrol officers will deploy armor to scenes uh, to deescalate, excuse me, when dealing with subjects in buildings or even in open air that may be armed. It is much more comforting and safer to deescalate or use time, distance and shielding from within and behind a vehicle designed to stop bullets than a patrol car. When talking about tactical operations, having armor in both the front and back to protect the teams while they prepare to deploy gas, flashbangs, prepare to arrest the subject or even just as they negotiate the surrender, again for most dangerous subjects and under the most dangerous conditions and locations. This is the standard and really the only way. Anyone that says law enforcement doesn't need armor has not stood in front of a house when you know someone has a gun and you hope that the car you're behind is going to stop the bullets. So I hope that gives you an idea of why we think it's important and why we're uh, building for the future. I will also say this. This is not a new idea. As a matter of fact, in 2020, when we originally purchased the used uh, Bearcat, we knew that we need to start saving for another newer option that this wasn't going to last forever. With that, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Chief Sands. Questions? Mr. Fancher?
I, I, you made a comment that it's really a, a regional team, I guess, or, or the tactical response team is a made up of us, Grant County, Adams County?
Yeah. So currently it's us, Grant County, Adams County and Moses Lake has the lead still.
With the lead in that? And then it sounds like Grant County has tried to provide, I mean, options.
Absolutely. And they still have the Mat V um, stationed in Efreita.
And then how about Adams County?
Adams County, I don't know if they have an armored vehicle and I know they have a uh, like a uh, oh, instant command vehicle.
I see. Just, just, I mean, just trying to figure out, you know, everybody's trying to do probably what they can, you know?
Sure.
Mr. Scog?
Could you explain how that, how this uh, vehicle would be financed?
Yeah. So we'll get into a deeper conversation in the finance um, during the budget process, but as a, I guess a higher overview.
Uh huh.
Um, we would use uh, I'll give you rough portions, I guess, but um, our drug seizure funds and our tactical response team funds that we have money set aside in um, would be the lion's share and then some money would come from a high crimes account. Uh, high crimes money is money that we get from uh, the state for being a high crime area, low population. So it's like a grant that we don't have to apply for, if you will.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So we are not recommending a decision tonight. Um, you, a couple of you had some good questions about the funding sources and what they can be used for and their balances and things like that. So recommending that this is information only tonight and that this uh, the decision on this particular purchase be made um, part of the budget process uh, starting next month.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think one of my questions was, you know, the how would you call this? I think a civil asset forfeiture is the term, but that money can be only be used for a certain number of things, correct?
Yeah, essentially that can only be used for drug enforcement um, and potentially drug education, but drug enforcement is the area that we most use it. Um, and then the high crimes money can only be used for, uh, well, I'd say high crimes and TRT can only be used for law enforcement purposes. But it can be more broadly used. So we've used it to purchase tasers, um, body cameras. Uh, most recently we bought a server uh, because we'd filled ours and um, so it can be used for those expenses and we try to use it for those types of expenses. So it's not to affect the general fund.
Great. Okay. If anybody has further questions, I think we know how to get those to the chief in the meantime and we'll bring this back to.
Uh, during the budget workshops next month.
Next week.
Um, that'll be the uh, budget kickoff meeting, but when the fire, or when the police department presents its budget. Um, I think it'll be one of the October meetings. Uh, we'll talk about this in more detail, including the funding options.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to staff reports. First up, we have a report from our streets, or excuse me, Stormwater Maintenance Manager Brad Mitchell.
And Your Honor, while um, while Brad is coming up, I uh, kind of on short note, just asked him to give this presentation because at um, at last week's um, uh, Moses Lake Watershed Council, they gave the state of the lake presentations and uh, Brad gave a presentation on what the city's doing for the health of the lake. And I was so impressed by it that I caught him afterwards and I said, Brad, the council needs to hear this. Can you come and present? And he said, sure. So Brad, take it away.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Um, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Brad Mitchell. I'm the street and stormwater manager for the city of Moses Lake. I'm gonna do my best not to put you to sleep tonight. I do have some notes. Um, I'm here to share the story of our program's accomplishments in 2025. So I'll start with stormwater runoff. Once seen just as a nuisance, is now recognized one of the most significant, forgotten about sources of pollution in our city. When rain falls on impervious surfaces like roads and rooftops, it picks up everything from oils to fertilizers to trash and sediment, carrying it straight into our waterways. The city stormwater division focuses the annual battle of capturing these pollutants from our system before it enters the lake, removing debris and sediment from our roads and continuing regular maintenance of our retention detention facilities. As you all are aware, the city of Moses Lake is required under its NPDS permit to manage, clean and maintain the network within the city limits. Meeting the requirements of this permit have led to some great accomplishments in 2025. We've seen a measurable reduction in pollutants entering the lake. Thanks to a robust street sweeping program, our team of three street sweepers has removed 261 tons of material to present day. This is the equivalent of 522,000 pounds. With our next two sweeping cycles, we plan to clear the million pound mark. So it's a substantial amount we're getting to getting off the road, keeping it from our lake. One of the other projects, we've been installing fencing slats in our retention areas to keep blowing sand from being a nuisance to nearby properties and neighbors. This is a multi-year initiative with one location being addressed each year. Our team has worked steadily on performing inspections. I'd like to share some of our maintenance stats from January of 25 to present day. We've completed all 51 outfall location inspections. In 2024, just to give you a reference, we've completed 1,958 inspections of our system. This year, we have 2,137 inspections scheduled with 1,682 inspections already completed. We've worked hand in hand with the public, city departments and the Columbia Basin Conservation District. As a group, we've launched stormwater outreach campaigns and presented information to our community. I've attended the Parks Recreation and Cultural Services Mobile Recreation Program alongside the Conservation District to provide education outreach to our youth. Thank you, Doug, for continuing that. That's a great, great way we can get in front of the children, help educate where our stormwater goes. In 2025, I developed a construction manual for how to manage stormwater in and around construction sites. This manual was mailed out to over 50 local contracting companies. This work directly has led to a reduction in construction site trackout and less dust complaints from nearby properties. I developed a door hanger that will enhance our communication with property owners and let them know exactly when our team will assess their site for inspection and need access. We deployed new mapping integrations to track target areas and identify pollution hotspots. The data has shown that sediment inside the catch basin has been cut in half. Further reducing potential for pollutants to enter the lake. Areas have been identified to have high sediment volumes or maintained more frequently. This is a big one. I'm really proud of my staff and I want to let you guys know about all the things that they've accomplished this year. So this year, three of our employees recently, and this is a mouthful. So this year, three of our employees recently, and this is a mouthful, recently completed pollution source control inspector certificates as well as a source control inspection certificate. And for those of you that don't know, this is as close to a bachelor's degree in stormwater as you can get. Our code enforcement division and construction inspection division have also, one member from each team, each division has also been certified as erosion control leads. This keeps contractors and the public informed, better informed when they may be doing something that could or will cause a discharge. To date, the city of Moses Lake has five employees with over eleven specialized stormwater certifications. So to talk about expansions in twenty six, we're looking to grow in a few areas. We're exploring new ways to complete capital improvement projects. We're looking to be more competitive obtaining grand dollars for our CIP projects. We're looking at a new equitable, more equitable stormwater rate structure. We're expanding how education outreach is managed. We're exploring alternative events and different methods to engage with the community. We're continuing to build partnerships. We're, we currently have a project right now with the Conservation District to identify a seed mix that will tolerate our arid climate, and we're going to be deploying that this winter to see how it does in the spring on a couple of test sites. And in closing, the progress we've made is not just a technical achievement, it's a testament to what's possible when we work together, and it really does take a team. We have different members throughout our entire organization, code enforcement, fire, police, and keeping us in the know helps keep things clean. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
Mr. Fancher?
Not a question, just a comment. Well done.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I just had one comment. Again, yes, I'm well done. I'm very proud of our public works staff. The people, the boots on the ground people especially, you know, in water, stormwater and sewer constantly impress me. One thing I did want to mention though is, you know, I understand the state has a lot to say about how we operate these systems, and so, you know, as we, as we deal with that, we want to make sure that we're staying abreast of any major changes in the law that could affect our operations here, and I think we have some resources to bring awareness to any of those issues through lobbyists or whatever. So I do challenge you and your staff to be aware of those and bring those to us whenever you can.
Yeah, we actually, on Thursday of last week, we had the Department of Ecology here. I had four members of my permit team that did an audit. We had a full top to bottom audit, walked our operations yard, went through all the books. So I'm looking forward to sharing the results of that with you guys in a future council meeting. But the initial takeaway from that audit was I got thumbs ups and head nods and lots of praise. So I'm looking forward to their final report.
Great. Thank you so much.
And you're all still awake, so I won't. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up, we have a capital improvement plans discussion follow-up presented by our city manager, Rob Carlinsey.
Thank you, and I really want to thank you all for the close to nine hour meeting that you endured last Tuesday, last week. Right here in this room, went from eight AM to almost five PM. And you covered a lot of ground in that meeting. Especially the first half of the day was capital improvement plans. It was well over a hundred pages of capital improvement plan material that you went through. And we heard a couple of changes from you, including the addition of Division Street as a new capital project that we didn't have on there, so we will add it. But we would like to come back to you probably on October seventh. That is going to be a budget workshop, workshop night. We're recommending that we come back to you on October the seventh to actually approve all of the capital improvement plans and adopt them. So if you have any other changes or suggestions or any tweaks to the capital improvement plans, just let us know maybe in the week, next week or so. So hopefully you've had some time to kind of digest everything we went over and think things through and maybe even read every page of those. Yeah, so we, we do plan to come back to you about October seventh for adoption of those CIPs, and I'm just asking that if you have any suggestions or changes, let me know.
Great, thank you, Rob. Any comments on that? Go ahead, Deanna.
I just wanted to thank the staff for what seems like a huge improvement from previous budget discussions or launches of the discussion. I feel confident that we can do things better this year, so thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. I will echo those sentiments as well, but this has been a lot more transparent process also. So I think the public and we especially appreciate that. Next up, we have a comp plan docket follow-up from our acting community development director, Vivian Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, at the last meeting, we presented the two thousand twenty five comprehensive plan and development regulation docket, and my staff member went through fifty development regulations. But after that, we admitted the comprehensive plan amendments that we were proposing to make. There's actually only four of them, and we'll bring those to you next meeting. Three of them are proposed by staff and one of them is proposed by the planning commission. One of them is just to change the utility element to reference the water and sewer plants that have been done. And the other two that are recommended by staff is to remove language in a policy, in two policies that require that development in the urban growth area connect to water and sewer. As you know, that's very difficult in many areas of the urban growth area. So we'll bring that back next week. I mean, next meeting.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on that. I mean, we way off base here, but two items that I think we had discussed previously, just when you can remind me whether they were included or not. One was the morgues allowing for that construction for morgues.
To allow them
Or a morgue where, or the, yeah.
Yeah.
Was that included in there?
Yes.
Okay, what was the other one? Oh, that's right. Okay. Yeah, maybe that was it. If I think of it, I'll ask you. Okay, thank you, Mark. All right, next up, we have a transportation sales tax renewal resolution presented by our city manager, Mr. Carlinsey.
Yeah, this is announcement, just to tell you what's coming at a future meeting. So, excuse me. So right now, the last ten years or I guess nine years, our taxpayers have been paying a two tenths of a percent sales tax for transportation improvements. So it was voted in by our voters about ten years ago, and it expires after ten years. And so the last year of this two tenths of a percent sales tax will be next year. And so if the city council wants to renew that for another ten years, then it will need to go on the ballot for the voters to approve sometime next year. It equates to about two and a half million dollars a year of sales tax that we can use to improve our roads and our streets. So when, when you go to the voters, you can go to the voters by state law in February, April, August, or November. Those are the months that you can put a ballot in front of the voters. I'm recommending that we put the question in front of the voters in February. And and what we'll do before then, obviously, you'll, you'll need to pass a resolution that will place the measure on the ballot. And so we have that scheduled for one second here. I think it's the September. The October. Sorry, I should have had this before, but it's, I believe it's the October fourteenth city council meeting. Yeah. So the October fourteenth city council meeting is when I recommend that you consider this rev- resolution put to put a measure on the ballot in February. We'll, we'll put together some information for you and the public as to how the money's been spent over the last decade. What, how the, how the money's been put to work, what projects, things like that. We'll prepare, we'll prepare the information materials for the, for the community leading up to the election as well. So just a heads up that my recommendation will be to bring forth a resolution for your approval to put a two tenths of a percent sales tax renewal on the ballot in February. Okay?
Okay. Next up, we have a special event analytics for Parks Recreation and Cultural Services Director Doug Coats.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am bringing you some analytics for our wonderful new software, Placer AI. I've chosen to do a very high level overview for you on these special events because if I go down the rabbit hole, we'll be here for three hours. And I know Dave needs to get home and have his glass of warm milk and get in bed, so we're going to move this along. So this is the special events that have happened so far this year, including those run by the community as well as those run by the city itself. First off, we have Bruising Tunes, which is a DMLA event. Downtown Moses Lake Association, it's been held for multiple years now. These are just pure attendance numbers. If you're looking across these, the blue is the current year, and then across towards the right of the screen, the years go back in time. So twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two is what we're looking at. The number at the top is visits, so that is the number of times any person came in, total number of visits. You can see that the visitors is the same on all of these. But in another, in another event that's coming up, the visitors will be different. So visitors are unique individuals, visits are times somebody showed up. So visits include somebody that might have come back, gone away, come back to the same event. Now Bruising Tunes, shorter event, it's not over a multiple day. Spring Fest, we'll see that the visitors and the visits are different numbers. So people obviously came multiple days on those events. So this gives you that, and this gives you the average dwell time, which is how long somebody spent there that day. Okay? So looking at this, you can see that the Bruising Tunes has been growing, had a little dip, a slight dip from twenty three to twenty four, but the event has been growing over the past four years. So that's good news. Bringing more people downtown is a good thing. So that's kudos to Downtown Moses Lake Association for that. And I've got to get back to here. Yeah, there we go. So Spring Fest, I just referenced them. So if you look at the top there, that is over the entire four day period. And again, it's twenty five, twenty four, twenty three, and twenty two, blue going across. Okay? You can see that our peak year was actually in two thousand twenty three. I believe that was the Vanilla Ice year. Just throwing that out there, I'm not gonna, not gonna say it was or it wasn't, but I believe it was. It gives you the size of the area, and there are custom areas I can do, so I, I can actually draw a map and outline of the area. So I outlined the school field, I outlined all the streets that we had events on, the parade went down and all that kind of stuff. This is what we get. So the size of the area there says two point six million square feet. So you can see it's the same for every single one, so we're comparing apples to apples. We had seventy nine thousand two hundred visitors, this, visits this year. We only had fifty three thousand one hundred visitors. So that means people were coming back multiple times. Visit frequency is an average of one point four nine visits per person. Okay? And then our average dwell time was about a hundred and sixty one minutes. So again, you can, you can see there's, there's a, an increase over time with the one anomaly being twenty twenty three where we had a huge spike. So they should probably just bring Vanilla Ice back every year, I'm guessing. You know, something like that. This is a second chart that because it's a multi-day event, it shows you what the peak day was, where we were. And again, this is, this is the deepest I'm going to these reports. If you want me to go deeper, I can pull up the software and show you a specific event, and we can walk through it, but I didn't want to get too far down the rabbit hole here because I didn't want to take this meeting till midnight. So you can see obviously that the peak day is generally the Saturday. The Saturday night with the parade, getting everybody downtown is the peak night. The Thursday is lowest, and it comes up a little bit on Friday and peaks on Saturday. So it's also the full day. The events don't run all day on Thursday. They don't run quite the whole day on Friday, but Saturday, they're full event day. So. So there's, there's Spring Fest, twenty twenty two to twenty five. Concerts in the park. Now, we don't have all the concerts in the park on here because the software will only sense up, it needs a minimum number of people. So this is over the past two years, and we're starting with July third in twenty twenty four because that was a peak. So on the far right is July third, twenty twenty four. We had six thousand eight hundred people in the park, in Makosh Park that day, that whole day. Most of those were in the evening for the concert and the fireworks. Okay? That was the Army, Army National Band, I believe, that came in that year with four different bands, and then we had the fireworks that night. So you can see the peak there on those nights, and those will also correspond, and we'll see those again when we get to the red, white, and boom. But this year, six, six thousand eight hundred in twenty twenty four. The one thousand three hundred was for the concert two weeks after, or three weeks after that, on July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Then this year, you can see our attendance builds. Okay, last year, we only had two concerts out of the five that we did that had more attendance, enough attendance to generate enough visits to give us data. This, this year, starting on July third, we pretty much hit every single concert that we had. So July third was seven thousand two hundred. Again, that was the, also the red, white, and boom night. Then we had one point seven, one thousand seven hundred in Makosh Park on July eleventh, one thousand one hundred on July eighteenth. And on July twenty fifth, we had eight hundred and thirteen people there for that. Again, these are, these are projections based on cell phone data for specific types of cell phones. So it's, it's a, it's a projection up from what they get. They get a, they've got algorithms and, you know, cool stuff like that that generates this information. But this shows that we are building our attendance at our concerts in the park. The, I believe it was the July eighteenth night was the Tahanah Band, which drew a ton of people and was a really good time, and I think we're going to try and do something similar to that next year again as well. I know next year, all of our concerts are going to be working on American music, it being the semi-quintcentennial next year. I just love saying that word, so I had to throw it in. Red, white, and boom. I talked about it, now we're going to talk about it. So you can see again, our, our peak year was the twenty twenty three year with ten thousand nine hundred in that park area. But that was also on July first, which was a Saturday, and it was a full day event. So we had a whole day of activities versus an evening of activities. The other two were after work hours on the third, and that was last year and this year, and we had six thousand eight hundred, and then this year, we had seven thousand two hundred. And again, remember, this is just in the park. I did not go up and capture everybody up on Division watching the fireworks from the sidewalk and the cars. So there could be quite a few more there. That's red, white, and boom. National night out. Chief Sands, him and his team do a great job of putting this on. The path, the two prior years was about one thousand three hundred. This is a little bit of a mislead because they moved downtown. So the day came up with data that said four thousand nine hundred, but when I looked at the hours for the evening, it was about two thousand people. So they are going up from the one thousand three hundred, but it's not all the way up to four thousand nine hundred because they didn't run the event all day. So that's a note for you, Chief, to run the event all day next year, and then you get credit for more people. Okay? Grant County Fair. Again, four years, again, current year is, is the blue, and it works its way backwards in time. This year, it was on a decline. I'm not going to attribute that to anything in particular other than maybe the acts, maybe, you know, they didn't get the band that people liked. They should have booked Vanilla Ice, just throwing that out there. But you could see that their peak was that twenty twenty two year of eighty point, eighty four point three thousand. And you can see their visitors are about half, close to half of what their visits are. So they're getting people back multiple times. I think Brian probably accounted for most of those visits himself with his kids. Uh, I think Brian probably accounted for most of those visits himself with his kids. Um, no? Dustin? Oh, so Dustin and Brian. Okay. Good enough. But you can see the dwell time here is a lot higher. We're getting about two hundred and thirty five minutes this year for, for dwell time. So it's, it's a very, very positive event for our community and draws people in. Um, you can see then, again, uh, the peaks are the Tuesday kind of free day and then the uh Friday. So. Uh, sip and stroll just happened. Uh, and again, this is a Downtown Moses Lake event. Uh, their peak again this year, they've peaked it this year. And then two years ago, uh, five thousand one hundred people downtown. Um, sipping and strolling. Uh, so that's another great event and I'm sure that will continue next year. Um, the next events we have coming up, we have the Imani Festival this Saturday. Um, assuming they get their uh permits and inspections done and we're going to work with them and get everything uh worked on as best we can. We have Flannel Fest coming up at the Grant County Fairgrounds, October third and fourth. DM La has the Harvest Festival uh downtown on October twenty sixth. Moravita Festival on November first, the Grant County Fairgrounds. And then we have the two uh holiday events, the tree lighting on November twenty first at St. Caius Square in downtown and the street party and, and ag parade on December fifth. Um, so that is my report. If you want me to delve into anything deeper, um, there is a rabbit hole we can go down if you so choose, or council, if you want to set up a time to sit down with me and walk through it individually. I'm happy to do that as well. Um, I'll take any questions anyone may have.
Mr. Lombardi.
Um, thanks Doug. Uh, so for bruise and tunes and sip and stroll, it'd be great if you could get that information to DM La to compare with who was actually paying versus who actually strolled in.
Absolutely.
Okay. Cause that will help them to, and help the city as well.
Yeah.
And the retailers to see, is it bringing in additional people other than those that want to bend an elbow?
These will, these will absolutely be shared with uh the groups that um are, are involved. So DM La um, uh, and uh the Grant County Fairgrounds and any other groups that are promoting on events, we will absolutely share the analytics, analytics with them. That's what they're for. Um, they're also for the lodging tax committee process. So we will be getting that information again. And there we will go down the rabbit hole. Where did they go before? Where did they come from? Where did they go to afterwards? Were they going to hotels and motels? Those kinds of questions.
And then also on Spring Fest, uh, it looks like the peak was that thirty five thousand mark. I think it was Saturday or something. Um, so my question is, you see where it peaks up on day three?
Yep.
So my question is, do we have a concern at any point going forward of having too many people?
And do we have, do we have a concern of having too many people?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what the number is, but.
Yeah, that, that I don't know. I, I, I hadn't quite thought that through. Um, I, I think crowds like that can be self-regulating. Like if you show up and it's, it's really busy, sometimes I would just turn around and go away. Um, you know, uh, my wife's an introvert, so you know, we show up at a place and it's too busy. We're not going in, we're leaving. Um, but uh, I don't know how she puts up with me and I think that's probably going through a bunch of minds up there. Um, but that's okay. Um, but yeah, I, I don't know. That would be a question I'd have to explore. I think we'd have to look at the fire uh evacuation type kind of things and also uh police capabilities and responding to emergencies. But we do keep areas clear for people to go through and emergency vehicle access. So all of those plans are in place. Um, I don't know that we have a capacity listed because we are all outside and the exits are here, 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 everywhere. So you can get out wherever you need to go, but it, it is a valid question we should be.
Yeah, but you know, as you know, being on LTAC, our, our goal is to try to make the participants as successful as possible. And so I'm, I just saw that peak and I was just curious as to, you know, uh, oh, will at some point, will the stadium be not big enough? So.
Correct. And, and like I said, I think it's also self, it's self-regulated, but I think also DM La from a business standpoint, doesn't want too many people downtown because then people can't actually get into the stores and actually do the shopping. And if it's wall to wall, it gets to be too much. Um, I don't think we're in danger of hitting that mark at any time.
I don't think so either, but.
It's a valid point.
Yeah, I've participated internationally on a number of big festivals and over a ten-year period, sometimes twenty years, they didn't plan out as it kept on getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So uh, but that's just a great problem to have, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Doug.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Uh, we have a bullet for other staff reports.
Yes.
Ambiguous.
It's only seven forty, so we're going to make up a few more things to.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Uh, actually something else?
Yeah, we actually do. Um, Brian has something. Um, before that, um, I'm hearing that the, the chip seal and restripe project's going according to plan. Um, now, according to plan doesn't mean that it's all wonderful. Um, so we did warn the public about the process of chiply, chip sealing because for a little while, there's going to be the, the loose gravel and the dust that we have to deal with. But uh, they're getting closer and closer to the finish line. Uh, what they'll do is once they'll get the, once the rock gets all settled in and adhered, then they'll do some sweeping and then they'll, then they'll put down a nice fog seal to give it. Yeah, that's right. They've, they've done that on Wheeler. Yep, they've done the fog seal on Wheeler. Um, and so that fog, fog seal will give that, give it that nice black new pavement look. And then they'll put down the striping. So um, we appreciate everybody's patience. Uh, while this is happening, we've had to, you know, those of us who were in the downtown a lot, we've had to take some detours and go around put up with the dust and chips, but it will be worth it when it's over.
So I had a quick question on that. Maybe you can answer, maybe not Brian, but um Wheeler from seventeen to L Road. Will that be a combination of three and five lanes in there? It seems a little confusing.
Closer to L, it tapers down to one.
Yeah.
And that's going to be for future, when that roundabout goes in there, traffic calming to get around that.
Okay, yeah, I can tell people are very confused still. So I wouldn't, maybe if I drive the right way, they'll follow me.
Hopefully sooner than later, uh, like I said, they just bog sealed that today. So maybe we should have a soon we get some lines down, just kind of for guiding traffic over to that one line.
Yeah, it, it's going to be an adjustment for sure. The roundabout, when that gets installed, I think will help make sense of all of it to a degree. But I understand probably part of it is you have to maintain four lanes at the intersection of seventeen for a period of whatever.
That's the duration of.
Yeah.
Feet. Sign with.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um.
It looks like Don has a question or comment.
Yeah, I was just going to ask on the roundabout of L, do we have an ETA on starting that project?
Oh man, we should ask when Levi was here. Um, I want to say his plan was end of this year, very beginning of this twenty twenty six. But I don't know the exact date. Or he was here because he'd give it to us. That's all right. I'll, I'll follow up with you, Don, get it exact.
It took, it takes about six weeks to order and they were about to order it last time I talked to them and it was a few days ago. So.
I think some of us are excited to get it in. So sooner the better.
Yep. Uh, Brian has one more thing and then I have something when he's done.
Uh, back to last Tuesday's meeting, we had a very brief discussion on the water, watering exemption for the school district. I was able to get ahold of them last week. Um, they would like to request an extension. The current one does expire on October first, which obviously is next Wednesday. Weather's kind of changing, irrigation should be slowing down, but they had asked for an extension. So if council wishes, I can draft up a ordinance, change the date and we can present at the next council meeting. If so, choose.
Okay.
That work.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We can just lastly, I just want to turn your attention to page seventy five of your packet. It's the uh city council meeting agendas forecast. And your meetings are about to, your meeting schedule is about to go on steroids. So um, we've got a meeting next Tuesday, the thirtieth. And that is when we will kick off the budget. We will hand deliver uh the, the twenty twenty six budget and pre-ring binders to each of you. Um, there'll be a budget message, Madeline will have the brief presentation. And then starting the following week, Tuesday, October seventh, we'll, we'll begin the budget workshops. And those will go on for a few weeks. Um, so you can count on a council meeting pretty much every Tuesday with some exceptions. Um, for example, there's a kind of a Chamber of Commerce dinner on Tuesday, October twenty first. And so we're recommending that you have a budget workshop on Wednesday, October twenty second. Similarly, um, Veterans Day is November eleventh. That's a Tuesday. So we're recommending that it be on the Wednesday, the twelfth. Also, we're recommending that, um, given that November fourth is election night, that we have a budget workshop that Thursday of that week. Also, um, there's a request for the two board members of the regional library district to come and talk to you. And so we're recommending that those two board members uh meet with you that same night, November fourth. And then also, uh, we have a joint meeting with the um Grant County Board of Commissioners at ten AM on Wednesday, October fifteenth. And we've met with their community development director and their public works director to think of some joint ideas for topics for that meeting. Um, if you, if there's anything that you'd like us to put on that agenda for your joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners, let me know so we can get that on the agenda. So, um, and then we're, the plan is to uh have you consider and hopefully adopt the budget uh the week of Thanksgiving. And then after that, things kind of slow down again. You just have one meeting in December, on December ninth. So. Okay, you ready? Ready to go into sprint mode?
Maybe.
I think you already are, actually.
I, yeah.
Okay, that's.
Do it and show up, as they say. Uh, okay, is that it? You sure? All right, we'll go on to council committee reports, starting with council member wires.
Yeah, the only thing I have to report on with the, the Grant Transit Authority is the Afraida Transit Center is up and running as of yesterday. Um, they did make some route changes, a couple uh in Afraida and Quincy, So Plague, but the one that affects Moses Lake is the Route twenty going between Moses Lake and Afraida. They increased the frequency from one hour to every thirty minutes. Um, so they made it a little easier to get back and forth. Um, so that should help uh Moses Lake since most of people from Afraida need some shopping here in Moses Lake. Uh, that'll connect them to the transit center, which they can get onto the shopper shuttle and then visit some of our bigger stores. So some changes at GTA, uh, everything's looking pretty good. So. All I have.
Thank you, Don. Uh, Deanna, and I'm sorry, I did see your name was up on there. Did you have something else?
Okay, yeah, sure.
Yeah. If you don't mind, um, on the ordinance for the exemption for the school district. So the current ordinance ends October first, but our next council meeting is until the fourteenth. So I'm sure the language in the ordinance will uh cover those two weeks.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, you're also up for your.
Yeah.
Report.
Um, I'm trying to think here. I missed the watershed council meeting because we were here um talking about capital improvement and the budget. Um, Board of Health. Um, nothing different there. We'll be going into um budget discussions there as well. So uh two budgets to be uh thinking about. Um, the Moses Lake Ad Hoc Homeless uh ma- uh meeting or committee meeting. Um, we did uh receive a couple of proposals regarding the um transferring uh individuals who are in need or in crisis uh about when Moses Lake doesn't have services to brought, to provide for them, they, this uh um entity, whichever one we choose, will um transfer them to someplace else, whether that's Yakima or Spokane or anyway. So we had three or four proposals, three, three, and we've narrowed it down to two, but there's some more questions that the committee decided that um we wanted uh to re-interview these people or these groups um before bringing it to council to decide uh which group we go with. And again, just as a reminder, these are the recording fees that we have been uh receiving. And that's what will be funding this transportation model for those who are in need. Uh, if anybody has any questions on that. So. Um, and then I just wanted to um share uh today uh the opening or the start of operations out at Sela. Um, you know, it was a very proud moment uh sitting out there. Um, enjoying the big day with everybody else and all of the partners that uh were involved in bringing Sela here. Um, the city, the port, I mean, there, there's just so many. Um, they were referring to them or us as citizens, uh meaning S- Sela citizens. So, um, you know, I, I don't like, I don't want to make it into politics, uh, uh, but I will say that um green energy is important for us, not only for Washington State, uh because it brings in money. Um, and if we uh aren't relying on foreign uh countries for some of these things that we can produce right here in Washington State. And it's even better that we can produce them here in the city of Moses Lake. So regardless of what you think about uh EV cars or anything like that, and I, I, I do believe that there should be uh an option for us to be able to do that if we want to. Um, the reality is, is that it's happening in our backyard and I'm very proud of that for our city and for our state. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Deanna. Council member Fancher.
EDC meeting, I went to uh on the last Wednesday. Um, they're being pushed right now in prep is for the lead summer. And uh, I think you've all got the invitation, but it's a two-day session, much more robust. Um, so kind of excited about that.
Thank you, Mark. Council member Lombardi.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so uh the port gave an update on, on a number of things. Um, they met with the, their meeting, they met today with the Director of Commerce. Um, again, the city is one of the shining lights that the state is counting on as far as growth, um especially what's happening on the west side where uh companies are abandoning uh some of the cities over there. Um, Boeing right now has, is down to twenty five planes here, but they have other projects in the work and they're keeping the amount of employees here to, at five hundred as a stable number. Um, the employees want to stay here as well. That was a big uh notation. So uh, there'll be other projects coming and so those employees will be hap- happy about that. Um, there's talk with the ports about carbon capture. So that was a big meeting on that. Um, they always give uh updates on companies that are in the port and you look at Moses Lake Industries, they're up to five hundred employees right now. So they're, they're doing very well. Um, I was asked to be at the Southwest Grant County Chamber event with Commissioner uh Burgess, and they went over some of the things they're trying to do there. It's kind of a somewhat of a neglected area over there. Um, and they're trying to uh increase growth as well. And when they redistricted the uh, the districts here politically, um, there's a part of the sixteenth that now creeps into Grant County. And so we now have another senator and two more representatives. And one of them um is Clicker and uh he's on the Energy Council. So um, they're, he's working with uh the port right now as well, looking at all of the energy projects. So big week for the Port of Moses Lake and um they just keep on rolling on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Council member Scog. No, no new Icelandic words to share with us or anything? All right, great. Deputy Mayor Madewell.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Uh, I just wanted to report on a couple of things. Uh, Deputy Mayor Madewell and I had the opportunity to uh join the Bapt- Moses Lake Baptist Church congregation on Sunday for their community days. Uh, where we were able to honor and pray for our first responders. So I did want to pass along that the Baptist church here in Moses Lake is watching out for our first responders. And I do believe that they even provided a lunch. Was that, is that correct for the police officers?
Uh, yes, they did do a barbecue. I swear I invited the firemen though. Swear to God.
You know, okay.
I did, I did.
I'll make sure that Pastor Fountain meets our new fire chief as soon as possible. The other thing is, I was also at the Sela opening for their operations or kickoff to operations day along with Councilmembers Martinez and Skog. Was anybody else there that I missed? Okay, Victor was there as well. But yeah, my, you know, my comments on it, regardless of what anybody's feelings on green energy are, you know, that when we talk about things like STEM, it's facilities like that that encompass all of those things. And you know, what I noticed is that there were a number of people on the Sela staff who are actually longtime residents of Moses Lake. And knowing a little bit about the history of that facility where they're located, that was once Guardian Fiberglass back in twenty oh eight. And yeah, almost right. It never got off the ground. And you know, this long history of this building really speaks to the resiliency of Moses Lake. And you know, to the opportunities that we can provide here. It doesn't, to me, matter as much what the name is on the sign outside the building. It's it's the opportunities that are provided inside the building for our own citizens, and Sela is certainly providing that. So we're very, very excited to have them be a part of our community and to expand as their operations grow. So with that, yes.
I just wanted to share that Senator Murray and Senator Catwell and Representative Newhouse, their staff members, their senior staff members were out there as well. And I made sure to introduce myself to the other two Senator assistants so that and thank them for their earmarks for our water, just to continue to keep that conversation going. So nice to meet them.
Great. Okay, our next council meetings, I think Rob announced those a little bit, but we have a special meeting coming up on the thirtieth at six PM. I think that's for our budget kickoff, correct? And then October seventh at six thirty for a study session. And then our regular meeting will be on October the fourteenth at five thirty. With that, we will be going into an executive session for twenty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten. Oh, sorry. And if you're, there are students in the audience, I will, or any one of us up here will sign your cards before you go. And then we'll go into executive session for twenty minutes. That works, too.